Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's municipal, Muskogee Municipal Authority, April 28th, 2025. Invitation by Mr. Reed.
Dear Lord, once again, we just come thanking you for the gift of another day. We'd like to thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us throughout this day, as that you would be with us tonight as your city councils come together. We have some decisions to make. We want all that we do that would be in your will and in your way. These are many other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor. Attention. Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the pledge to the state flag. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It symbols a peace unite all people. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Present.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of March 24th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Move for the approval of the minutes.
Okay, we got approval.
Second.
In a second? Okay, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Uh, uh, motion passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending March 31st, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Okay, item passes. We will now adjourn the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting. Next, we will call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of minutes of March 24th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Number two.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for the period of March 15th, 2025, through April 18th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. We'll now adjourn this meeting. And we will now call to order the regular Muskogee City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Uh, item passes. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Items one through 10.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
I would like to make a motion. We move item number 22 up to item number two.
Second.
Eleven.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Stout?
I need to read it.
Oh, 22, please.
Discuss and consider approval of a contract between the city of Muskogee and Hilldale Public Schools to furnish two uniformed police officers to provide law enforcement security for functions and act as the school resource officers for the school district campuses or take other necessary action.
Counselor Stout.
Yes, um, just to start off, Katrina, can you verify the action that we will be taking tonight?
Yes, the action that you take tonight can be a motion and a vote to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract. However, since contracts of this type fall into the purview, the sole purview by charter of the city manager, only the city manager can make that decision to have that contract.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start off by sharing a letter that I received this morning from a fellow teacher and parent from Hilldale, Mr. Tim Stevens. I am writing you this letter as a parent and employee of Hilldale Public Schools because I am unable to attend the meeting tonight. I think that it is absurd that you are even questioning the fact that we do not need our SOR officers in our school in today's society. With all the school shootings and the poverty in the, in our school systems, SROs are much, are a mess needed for the school districts. Our SORs are the main focus of protecting our students and staff from threats of violence. Our school has benefited from so much from having a sworn law enforcement officer available at the school to help diminishing critical response times when violent incidents or other emergencies occur. If we want our students and teachers to achieve their full potential, I believe that the schools must be safe and provide a safe, warm learning and teaching environment for our teachers and students. The community and students benefit from having the SOR officers in so many ways. Our SORs have been given, been guest speakers in classroom settings. They have built relationships with our students so that our students understand cops are great people and they are serving to protect and build relationships with students to stray away from violence. I know that our SOR have educated our administration on risk and the opportunities for behavior problems and have walked our buildings numerous times to make sure that we have their surveillance and the maintenance to properly educate our students and staff for a safe learning environment. Studies and surveys by educators, students, and community members have shown that a school-based law enforcement program provides a safe learning environment for all. I have worked at Hilldale Public Schools for over 10 years. I am the alternative education director, and I have known the two men that have been our SORs for years. Most of my students have not had a positive experience with cops, but our SORs have taken time to build that relationship with my students. And by doing so, my students are not afraid to ask them for help and life questions. By, by the SROs coming in and taking time to speak and build relationships with my students, I can see that my students are wanting to do better for the community. They live in and they understand that they do not want to put these officers in tough situations. The benefit that they bring to the school is without a doubt great for our students and staff. I personally have three students at Hilldale Elementary, and they all love Officer Ford. He is always around showing his face and building relationships with every student. My sons and daughters love the fact that Officer Ford is at lunch with them every day and is always around for a hug. Our SORs do not, our SORs do a great job of increasing the feeling of our students to feel safe, limit aggressive behavior, and improve the relationships between law enforcement and our school community. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my letter, and I hope that you, as members of the city council, think very hard about this important decision. I am very sorry that I am not there, but I have another event this evening. Mr. Tim Stevens. It is important that we just have our SORs to ensure the safety of our kids and administrators. They go far beyond just security at our schools, the relationships they have, just seeing them at the different events. It's far more than just security for our students. They're that lifeline, and our officers of the SROs and our CRR programs make a greater impact on our youth than we'll ever know. So, with that said, Mayor, I turn it back over to you for...
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to have Chief Teehee come up and speak. Before he says something, I'd like to remind everybody here, the city council has supported this program for years and years now, and I suspect this council will support this program as well. Uh, I, I want, I think everybody involved in the city and certainly city council realizes the importance of this program. We realize how successful, utterly successful it's been over the years for many of the things that Jamie just mentioned. I just want everybody to realize that our police serves the community as a whole, and our chief and others have to make decisions that are best for the community as a whole We are short of police force. We've got guys working overtime, and many of you who were high schoolers or college students could work 70 hours a week overtime. It, after, after two, three, four weeks of that, it gets pretty tough. It's not fun anymore. The money's not fun anymore. It's tough, and, and we've got to keep people out in the city, protecting the city. So I just want everybody to realize, council's going to make a vote here tonight, but I want everybody to realize just what our police force is under and, and the chiefs out there under. It's, it's tough times right now, exceedingly tough times right now, and I'd like everybody to keep that in mind. Having said that, Chief?
Thank you. Let me start by saying first, I heard what Jamie had to say, and I've had texts from people I go to church with that are Hilldale, and for the most part, I completely agree. Uh, there's not anything, I don't think, that's going to be said tonight that I disagree with. It's valuable, always has been valuable, and will continue to be valuable. I had a meeting recently, about a month or so ago, with Mr. Puckett. The one thing I liked about that meeting is we had the ability to meet face to face. He understands where I'm coming from, and I understand where he's coming from. Uh, we had a cordial meeting. He understands, he's always supported law enforcement. Uh, I continue, I expect him to continue to support us, and I told him that, that day, I said, "I understand if I was in your position, I would do the same thing you're doing." And he believes that, I believe that if he was in my position, he would do the exact same thing. So that animosity is not there. Uh, this is a tough decision for everybody involved, I can assure you. I won't go back over the numbers, but I know I gave some of the numbers to, to you with regards to our manning levels at some of the most recent luncheon, council luncheons. And the main thing about that is that we're 25% short, nearly 25% short of our patrol staffing, 25% short for patrol. Now patrol is the backbone, always has been and always will be for most, if not every, police department. And we're 25% short, and that's having taken two of our community resource officers and one of our investigators that handles general crime and one of our investigators that handles drugs. So that's four officers that we're short that we put into patrol just to facilitate trying to get our manning levels up. And recently, we've also had to take other positions from our non-uniform to rotate through on two-week cycles, just to, again, to try to get the manning levels up. Those numbers, I mean, we're short mainly on night shifts. Uh, those guys are at the points where they don't have the ability to take a day off. If a special event comes up or something happens, um, they don't, they know the only way they can take off is to call in sick. Uh, that's a violation of policy, uh, but that's the only way they have the ability to get off outside of their primary vacations. The ability to call in and just say, "Hey, can I get the night off if I want to go do something with family?" Doesn't happen, and hasn't for quite some time. So to say that they're living with officer burnout on a day-to-day basis is a, is a huge understatement. Typically, I don't read off of this, but I want to get this part of it right. Says unfortunately, our officers are stretched beyond their limits, working without extra days off and the rest that they need to continue doing their duty. This relentless strain will or is taking a heavy toll, leading to exhaustion, poor health, dangerous levels of burnout, and here's the biggest problem with that. When officers are pushed too far, mistakes happen. When those mistakes happen, we begin to lose trust. Trust erodes within our community. The safety of both officers and the community is put in, at risk. If we can't address these staffing shortages, we risk losing good officers, but more importantly, we risk losing the trust and faith that our community has put in to our department and that we've put into them. I've spoken to the Fraternal Order of Police. They said that they're more than willing and capable of helping to facilitate to have officers there every day. I know that, uh, different schools have hired retired officers and have off-duty officers to supplement, to have people there at the schools, uh, and that's, that's obviously an option. But with that being said, I spent a lot of times this weekend walking around doing a little bit of work on my property. Majority of that time, what I was doing was listening to God. Whenever I have a critical decision to go on, and I, and I'm a big believer in the power of prayer, um, I pray that God will give me wisdom and vision to make fair and just decisions on, every day. I'm, I'm tasked with decisions every day, and this is not one I take lightly. Uh, I knew what was going to come of it, um, and so over the weekend, that was what I focused on. I sat in church yesterday, and rather than listening to what was going on with the preacher, I kept going back to, okay, well, this is trying to figure out, how do we, how do we do this tonight? On April 29th, um, which was the day before our last physical agility, I did something I'd never done before. You know, in the Old Testament, they talk about it takes people to get to a point, at their lowest point, before they ever look up for the answers. Well, that was kind of the point I felt like we were at with the police department, and I called several people and said, "I need specific prayer that God will send us qualified applicants tomorrow." And lo and behold, God showed up. Uh, we've got the potential to have one of the biggest hiring classes that we've had in Muskogee history. Now unfortunately, it takes, you all know that if we hire in July, August, something like that, it's going to take a year or so to get them people, uh, those officers on the streets. But good news nonetheless. We was faced with, for the most part, we would get maybe one, maybe two through the background phase or through the polygraphs and in the background phase. We actually have seven, and that's unheard of, and a potential for an eighth Wednesday at an interview. I tell you that to tell you, one of the things that also, as I was going through over the weekend, I wanted, I wanted the ability to speak tonight and not be about prideful or boastful about something that's all just about the police department, because I know we have a community to serve. We serve not only the people, officer, or the students in Hilldale, but also those in Muskogee Public Schools and some of the private schools that are here as well, not to mention 40,000 residents that we answer to. Uh, so again, this, this doesn't come just out of the, out of the, out of the blue. It has to do with the safety of our officers and our community, because I believe because of the burnout, we're at the point where mistakes are going to be made, and then we have to deal with those mistakes because of that, and that's not a good thing either. So with that, one of the things that I would like to offer tonight is a compromise. You know, we're a, we're a country that's built on compromise, and unfortunately, there's not enough compromise at all levels of government. Uh, there needs to be more of that. Uh, the compromise that I'm willing to do, and I had a meeting with our command staff this morning, a lengthy one, uh, because I wanted to make sure that all of our command staff are on the same page, and they are. Uh, we talked about having all of us talk, but they chose to allow me as a representative, so, uh, that's why I'm here tonight. Uh, the compromise is this. We have the ability, hopefully with these new officers, influx of new officers coming down the road, to go with one-on-one. We take one of our officers back and put them in patrol, and we lose, leave an officer there at Hilldale. Um, with the looks of this class, and if we get another good solid class in the fall, I would be more than happy to look at the potential this time next year of not just keeping the one there that's there, but to add that second one back. Don't know what future's going to hold, but I think, um, you know, if I've learned one thing through this, is one is, is the power of prayer is, is powerful. And when we came together as a community, several of our prayer partners are reverence different people throughout the community, and it's the first time I'd ever asked, I ask for safety all the time, and I know a lot of us do that, but this is the first time I specifically asked for qualified applicants, thinking, hey, it's worth a shot. And lo and behold, uh, he showed up in a big way. Reminded me of the, the movie Facing the Giants. It was, they were outmanned, outclassed, out, out everything until God showed up. Um, so to me, I think that would be something that would be a solution. Um, again, it's a decision that you all have to make as a council. The one thing that I can promise you is that regardless of what we do or what you do tonight, we as a department is going to do everything in our power to take care of everybody within the city of Muskogee. That's, we took that pledge, and we'll continue to do that. Some of the stuff that I talked to you all about, about what, if we had to, had to keep it as is, was taking a, two of our drug unit guys, there's only two left because we'd already taken some from them, and then taken our last two current community resource officers. And you'll say, okay, well, how is this a fair trade? Well, one, if it, our drug unit guys, it's not fair to have them, or safe to have them out doing, one person doing their job, so we would pull both of them. Uh, CRR, our, our community resource officers the same way they do, and I just found out today, about 90% of their work is with Muskogee schools. They do the elementaries and junior highs, so they're doing what our guys are doing out at Hilldale, only just not called the same thing, and they're not there every day. Those are the four positions that we stand to lose. Uh, and I've talked to, again, command staff this morning, and we fully expect with these influx of officer applicants that we very well could hopefully only have to do that for a year. But that's a long time to go without those guys doing the things inside Muskogee community as well as our drug unit. We're shorthanded as it is, uh, and I'd hate to think that we would not have a drug unit we could get outside help, but, uh, that's kind of the position that we're in, uh, as far as depending on what the, the council's decision is. We've got something in place that if, if the compromise is accepted, uh, we can, will be adequate until we can get more people on the street. Uh, and then again, like I said earlier, I honestly believe if we can continue with this increase in applicants, that we'd have the ability to address that and look at it again this next year on adding someone back. And I had a couple of different things. I talked to our, we've got an excellent peer support group. I know, uh, our therapists, I've talked to you guys about them, and they just gave me some different information about burnout, but I won't waste your time with that. That's something that, uh, it's, it's, you just know that it's legitimate, um, and it's, it's a detriment if we continue to put our officers out there and, and not have the opportunity to have time off and to be away from the job that they're doing and what they do on a day-to-day basis. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's, that's how people get killed. Uh, Chief, if things go well over the coming months, would it be your desire to try to fill that position or those positions with the, the officers that Hilldale has come to love?
I mean, that's the, uh, just to be open and fair, and, and I've talked to, to Mr. Puckett about this as well. If the, if the council decides that they're going to keep two officers at Hilldale, then it's only fair that I open that up to all officers for those two positions. And you say, well, how is that fair? Well, I'm taking two that are coming from the drug unit and two from SROs that's probably been doing that job longer than what they have been out at Hilldale. And so it's only fair to put them all in a pool, to put everybody in the opportunity to have a, that job if you decide to go with the two.
Okay, uh, my next question is, and I think you just answered it, uh, you've got to manage your police force. So, um, it, uh, I don't know if the word's probable or not, but, um, uh, it's very likely that there, both of these gentlemen out there now would not be there full-time.
That's possible, yes. Now, and I, I've told Mr. Puckett that if, if, uh, we would work with them. I mean, we're going to make sure that the school's safe.
And, and I know the position you're in, and I applaud you for realizing where the school's coming from and where all these people are coming from. Uh, thank you for that. Ms. Bodenhammer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's my understanding that the council can set policy so we can recommend to the manager that he allow, uh, the police to put some people over there.
Yes, the, the body as a whole can make that recommendation, but again, it's up to the city manager whether or not a contract goes in place.
Okay, and if he decides that a contract is going to go in place?
Yes.
Then the chief here, uh, delegates his force where and how he needs them?
Yes, after, after agreement with the city manager. If he will, the city manager relies on Chief Teehee to spread his force out the way that he thinks is best.
Okay, so, so council's, um, influence on this whole thing, if you will, is only to say, "We would like to do this policy."
Yes, that's correct.
This is our policy. Now, the chief has offered a compromise, and he can offer compromises.
Yes, that's correct.
Council cannot. We can't say, well, here's what we want you to do with these men.
No, you can let him know what you would like done, but it, it won't make any difference in the, in the final moments, because the chief has that decision.
If he makes a compromise and we support it, it's likely that that compromise might be held.
It's...
You would, you would try to keep your word on it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, I mean, if the parties can reach a compromise, if the city and Hilldale schools can reach a compromise, that's, of course, more likely to occur.
Okay, uh, thank you for that clarification.
And if, just the other, a couple of things, just to get at, mainly so we'll know kind of where this whole deal is about. Originally, this was going to be a five-year program, kind of like what we had at Muskogee back, I don't remember, Councilman Hall knows how far back that was.
1994.
Yeah, a long time ago. And then they adjusted and made, you know, took it over themselves. The key to that was, and then to the Hildale situation, was that when Rex was here, we was given the ability to hire over. So we could hire over those two spots to take care of the Hildale positions. Well, unfortunately, ever since that's happened, we've not been in a position to be fully staffed. We have the potential to be fully staffed more so than what I've expected in a long time, depending on how the next several months play out. So that would give us the ability, if that happens to, I mean, ideally, it would be we could hire two above and have both out there and everything would be fine. But right now, we're at critical mass as far as getting us through till these other guys get on the street.
Chief, thank you for your leadership, and I know that your team has a lot of respect in you, and they'll do all they can do for you. So thank you for the leadership.
And if, one other thing, if the compromise is acceptable to Mr. Puckett and his board or whoever he has to answer to, I will allow, I mean, he can keep whoever he wants to out there.
Can I ask a question? When's the last time you had a, you had a group coming out that are not out in the streets yet, but they're...
The potential?
Yes.
I don't know that we've ever had one this big, ever.
Oh, really?
Yes. I mean, my group was six in 1987, and we've had several of fives over the years, but that hadn't been in the last decade, I know.
So you haven't had any come out, like in the last year?
Big classes.
That are getting ready to hit the streets?
Well, I mean, we've got one that's in FTO, and then we've got another one that's in CLEAT. That's it. We've just been kind of piecemealing one or two here at a time, and that's, that's what's exciting about this.
They all seem to find me when I'm driving down the road.
That's what's exciting about, about the potential to have seven or eight. There'll be more out there to catch you.
I thought we needed a laugh, right?
I agree.
One last thing for me. You wouldn't mind sharing your prayer circle with me, would you?
I would absolutely.
It sounds like they do good work.
They do good work, absolutely.
Good job. I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
Okay, it appears that we've got a small, well, maybe a me, well, maybe a large list of folks who would like to talk tonight. And could we start off with Kinley? Kinley Moore, please. Did I butcher your name up too bad?
No, she's the baby.
She being shy?
She'll rock it.
Kinley, if you would, all you need to do is state your name and then speak into the mic so we can all hear you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Kinley Moore.
You can pull that mic down a little bit if you want.
Yes, please.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Kinley Moore, and I'm a student at Hilldale Middle School. I'm here today to talk about why it's important for Officer Ford and Officer Jones to stay at our school. Every day when I walk through the doors, I feel safe, and a big part of that is because of them. Officer Ford and Officer Jones are just here to protect us. They are a part of our school, it's family. They build real relationships with students. They know our names, they check in on us, and they make sure we know we are not alone. They are not just enforcing rules, they are preventing problems before they even start. They listen when we need someone to talk to, they teach us about respect, safety, and responsibility. Having them at our school doesn't just make it safer, it makes me, it makes it feel like a better place to learn. If Officer Ford and Officer Jones were taken away, it would create a gap that no one else could fill. Their presence reminds us every day that we matter, that our safety matters, and that there are adults who care about more than just our grades. They care about us. Please, for the sake of every student who walks those halls, let's make sure Officer Ford and Officer Jones stay right where they are, protecting and guiding our school community, knowing not just officers, they are a part of our school family. Thank you.
Thank you, good job. Dad, good job. Stevie Moore, please.
Stevie Moore.
Thank you.
With my baby that just came, so...
She did a great job.
Yes, I'm a little teary-eyed, but I did come, I teach fifth grade at Hildale and have been at Hildale for 11 years now. So what better way to express how important they are to us than literally from them in their own words? So I wanted to read some of this. So they, what we asked them to do was write, tell us how important Officer Ford and having an SRO, how it makes them feel. So this is one put. He will help me and ask how I can fix the problem. He helps me feel safe and always has a positive attitude. He's brave and he's really good at his job. I won't forget him, and he's just a great person, so I hope he stays. Thank you. And a lot of these talk specifically about Officer Ford and the impact that they have made, so it's not just an officer to them. I know we talked about having somebody else in there. He is part of our family. Those kids know who he is, and that makes a huge difference. I love Officer Ford, he makes me feel safe, and without him, I would really have a hard time feeling safe. He is a good protector, and I feel like I can come to school every day without having to worry about anything that is going to cause danger to our school. Without Officer Ford here for the kids in the lower grades, I would be worried about my friends and family that is in lower grades. He is like a dad to me. If anything was going to happen, he would be there to protect us. Officer Ford is very important to our school because he protects us in many ways. I have only been at Hildale schools for four months, and on my first day, he gave me and my brother a tour of the school. I came from a school without, without an officer to help, so I did not feel safe, but now I do. For example, if there was a break-in, there wouldn't be someone to help at my old school, but at Hildale schools, we have Officer Ford. Officer Ford helps me feel safe on school grounds. I know he will protect my classroom. I never should feel scared during an emergency, and I never will. He has a very important job of keeping the school safe. If I ever feel scared or uncomfortable, I can go talk to Officer Ford. He is a major part of the school. Officer Ford is there for everybody. Officer Ford is always willing to help and almost always has a smile on his face. Whenever you see him in the hallways, he always greets you. He works very hard every single day for our safety. I'm so grateful for Officer Ford. Thank you, Officer Ford, for protecting us and keeping us safe. You helped us a lot with our problems. I hope you stay here with us, kids, and keep us safe. We wouldn't know what to do without you. You helped this school out as best as you could. You always make sure we are first when it comes to intruders, no matter if it's just you, you will always be the first, be there for us and be the first one. You make this school safer when you're here with us. I really do appreciate you. You make this world a better place. And we have stats that say how important he is and what a difference he makes. And as a teacher, we go and we need to teach them. So having them come here and knowing he's there and they feel safe just takes, already takes a load off of them and us. So they're more than, more than just SROs, more than just officers, they're mentors, role models, trusted adults who create a positive welcoming environment for our students. Every day, they build relationships based on trust and respect. And a lot of things they talk about, I mean, they said he's like a dad, you know, having someone there. And I think Teehee had great points, but he missed the whole, what about the positive relationship the officers have with all those kids? He knows them all by name. What other person can do that? And they should matter. That makes a huge difference. So we ask you, please, just leave them where they are. And those two specific officers, please. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Cody Moore, please. State your name for the record.
Cody Moore.
Thanks.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Kell. Tonight, you're going to hear various opinions as to why Hildale should keep both Officer Ford and Jones, but I'm going to give you all some actual facts from credible sources I've found since I heard about the SRO possibly being taken away from Hildale. I spoke with the state of Oklahoma Safety Specialist Charles McMahon, and he told me the advantages of having SROs in schools, along with facts about shootings. Told me history has shown that most school shootings only last three to five minutes. He spoke about how vulnerable it would leave Hildale if we didn't have both officers at the schools. He also spoke about how the Aurora, Colorado movie theater shooting only lasted 90 seconds, and it resulted in the loss of 12 and injuring 90. Studies have shown that since 2018, there have been 1,313 victims shot at schools nationwide. 978 of those have been since the COVID-2020 shutdown. I know one idea thrown out was to have an officer come to the school at the start of the day, possibly one time during the day and when school gets out. Studies have shown that there have been over 1,200 shootings happening between morning classes and afternoon classes nationwide. I was able to get the last three years from 2020 to present of the case reports done by both Officer Ford and Jones. There have been 36 cases of threatened to perform acts of violence, three cases of planning to perform acts of violence, two cases of assault and battery, and three cases of assault and battery on school employees. I have made contact with over 35 schools all across green country, and 20 of the 35 use either the city or county officers. I've heard the argument, why doesn't Hildale have their own SRO program like Muskogee? I'm sure there's several reasons why, but one big reason I found is to look at the budgets. Muskogee Schools has a budget of over $48 million. Meanwhile, Hildale's is at $18 million. I also found it interesting that the city of Talikwall puts a city officer at all seven schools across the district, yet Talikwall is less than half of the population of Muskogee. So what are they doing in Talikwall to have enough officers to support putting one at every school from start to finish compared to Muskogee? It's hard to believe that it's been over 25 years since the Fort Gibson School shooting, and what's mind-blowing to think about that is that the event was so out of the ordinary that President Clinton spoke about it in the White House, yet in 2025, they don't even mention school shootings on the news anymore. Another thing we must ask ourselves is how many times have SRO officers been needed to help get suspects or witnesses to talk to someone they know and recognize during investigations in the last 10 years? The SRO program goes well beyond the walls of public schools. These programs help shape the minds of children and teens in a society where, quite frankly, being a first responder isn't appreciated as much as it should. I challenge future city manager Francis, Mr. Teehee, and the council to go out to Hildale in the next three weeks before school gets out and go see what the SRO officers do daily. Look at the interactions and relationships they have developed with the kids out there. These two officers need to stay exactly where they are because these two officers are properly trained and love being there. I hope Mr. Francis will listen to the voters of Ward Two when we ask you to keep both Officer Ford and Jones at Hildale where they have developed relationships with these kids. Thank you all.
Ms. Molly Spriggs?
So before I began teaching at Hildale, I was on the parent's side of things, and seeing Officer Ford and at Hildale every day was a comfort, and I knew that it was more than just a job for him. He truly cares about the safety of the students and the staff, and the students respect him, and he has helped so, so many of them. And some of, then some of my kids moved on to the middle school and the high school where Officer Spears was, and then now Jones, protecting them and making sure that everything was safe there, you know, making, having routines and things like that. My oldest told me that, how Officer Jones makes sure that he greets all of them with a smile and tells them all good morning, and he goes around checking things, like, just like Officer Ford does. And this SRO program is so much more than just a security for the school, it's a peace of mind for the parents and teachers. And then I began my teaching career at Hildale. I'm now in my third year, and as a parent, when my kids would come home and talk about the intruder drills that they had to do, it would make me sick to my stomach to think about them having to practice that. And as a teacher, though, sitting in that first professional development day where we learned about all the intruder drills and evacuation drills and all of that stuff, it hit me just how much goes into all of that. And during my first intruder drill, as a teacher with my classroom babies, huddled in the corner with me, trying to make sure that they were quiet and also trying to calm their fears as well, I got a piece over me because I knew that we had one of the most dedicated officers going above and beyond to learn everything he possibly could to make us safe as we could possibly be. It was really scary at first, the thought of having to be responsible for the safety of 20-plus kids, all while knowing my own kids were somewhere else in the school, but not after seeing what all Officer Ford and his team does to ensure our school is the safest it can be. He studies the sad situations like the Uvalde school shooting and other things like that and learns what he can from those, and then brings it back and, and does what he can to ensure that our school doesn't go through those things. And I can promise you, he would not hesitate to go in for any of us. And I had a student who came to me multiple times about a home situation that was terrible, and the child was pretty traumatized upon telling me, and each time, all but begged to not have to go home. I did, I did everything that was required by law to do, that I was required by law to do, but felt like the child was falling through the cracks. The system was failing that kid. Having Officer Ford in the school, knowing that kid, talking with that kid daily, we worked together to make sure that this kid did not go unnoticed, like many other kids going through the system do. I hope you all strongly consider the benefits of having these two officers in our school, not just random ones. The relationships that they build with the kids go so much deeper than you realize. The impact that they have, that the impact that they have goes much deeper than you can even imagine. I knew the connection that they had was, with the kids was great, but I never truly knew how important it was until the situation with the child that I just referenced. No rent-a-op or security system is going to accomplish what Officer Ford is able to. So many officers in this day and time get a bad rap, and with that, with them being, with them getting to interact with the kids on a daily basis and building that bond with them, it allows the kids to see that they can actually trust them. Thank you again for listening, and I hope you will see that their presence in our school is a blessing to the kids and just them specifically, like, like they said, just, not just different ones randomly, but just those two specifically, it really helps. And I know the kid I was talking about, that things wouldn't have moved along for her if it had just been random people or nobody at all, so, thank you.
If you would just speak your name.
Hi, I'm Katie Capps. So council, tonight, I would like for you all to picture this scenario. You work in an elementary school, and you're approached by an 11-year-old girl. She asks you, can I speak with the school resource officer? And you ask the girl, what for? And she simply just replies to you, I'd rather not say, just family stuff. Working in the public school system is an eye-opening experience. On any given day, we're tasked with not only teaching these kids, but dealing with the multitude of different home lives that each child brings with them when they enter the building. Some have been abused, some come hungry, some come with dirty clothes and dirty bodies, and it is our job to love and protect them anyway. This scenario that I told you about, the young girl, is a real conversation that I had with a young girl in my fifth grade class a few weeks ago. And of course, I let her go see Officer Ford because I knew that no matter what family situation she was going to tell him, he was the man to handle it. And he was going to handle it with professionalism, and he was going to handle it with love because that's who he is. I know that the middle school and high school feel the exact same way about Officer Jones. Our students need him, our staff needs him, and tonight, I ask you, council, as a current teacher and also as a parent of a Hildale student, to do the right thing for Hildale Public Schools and to not remove Officer Ford and Officer Jones. I would now like to read you a couple of letters from our fifth grade students. So this is from a fifth grade female. She says, Dear city, please keep Officer Ford here at Hildale. He is a great guy, he makes people laugh and feel safe. When I was in a very bad situation, he was on my side and made me feel safe. For example, if there was an emergency, who would be like Officer Ford and go right in for the emergency? We love Officer Ford and we know him. And who could replace Officer Ford? No one is as good as him. Every time I see him in the hall each morning, he greets me and all the other students. Officer Ford is a friend to everyone, please keep Ford here. This is another fifth grade student. Dear officer, dear Officer Ford, I want you to stay here because you were there when fifth grade needs you, and when we have drills, you were very protective of us, like we are your own sons and daughters. That is why we need you. We do not want you to go. Please let Officer Ford stay at Hildale. No officer left behind. This is another fifth grade student. We want you to stay because we all care about you, and what would we do if there was an emergency and you were not here? We want you to stay, we love you very much, and we hope you get to stay. You're great, and we want you here. Thank you.
Mr. James Gully? Mr. James Gully?
There's a fine man if I've ever seen one. You know, this, I think this may be the first time I ever stood on this side of the podium. Thank you all so much and I'm gonna, you've heard so much about the support of this, so I just wanna thank you for what you all are doing and all the time constraints, y'all have a lot of decisions. So I wanna be, when we talk about the SRO officers, I wanna be very transparent. I have a granddaughter at the, at that elementary and I got a grandson at the middle school. So this is pretty personal for me and my daughter graduated from Hildale in two thousand and six, the same year I began serving on this very council. And around twenty-twelve, while I was still serving on this council, Hildale Public Schools approached the city with a request to place a school resource officer at the elementary school and another at the m- middle school, high school campuses. So I'm, after my daughter being on the council, asked her, I asked my daughter what she thought and her answer was very clear and she says having these SOO officers is gonna make a big difference because she just came through that system. And she told me the pres- presence of Captain Scott Shill and Officer Jerry James at all the school events, the football games, basketball games, gave the sen- students a sense of security when they were at these events. She also said that a lot of student mischief never even happened because these SRO officers, or the police officers, James and Shields, they hurt all these things. They snipped a lot of stuff in the bud and I appreciate them for that. So I think one of the other gentlemen couldn't hear too well, but I urge you just to go visit the sites and watch the students interact with these officers. And we do the cup coffee with cop and we do all these outreach. Well, Officer Ford and Jones, they interact with over two thousand students on a day-to-day basis, a hundred and ninety staff members and countless parents and grandparents every day. These are the things that we want to have as a positive in- input for our image of our police officers, we always want people to understand that police officers are there to help and this program does a lot more than just, just the students and that sort of stuff. So I'm gonna share one other thing with me, with y'all. I attended a KidSpace presentation at a fourth grade class focused on child abuse awareness and I think this really hit home what Kid, KidSpace does to help protect our, our children. And what impressed me most was how much those students remembered from past presentations from the KidSpace personnel. And they weren't told just to call a number. You see these ads and they want the kids just call one eight-hundred, well, if you're in pre-K or kindergarten, you don't know an eight-hundred. But the facilitator was told, if you have an issue, go to your teacher, go to your principal, go to Officer Ford. And these kids trust Officer Ford and just go and watch him interact with these students. They trust him and it's a very viable thing. And so then I, I wanna address something I hope that never happens if an inactive shooter actually ever comes to campus. I truly believe Officer Ford and Jones are very well-prepared for this. They would immediately call for backup and every officer in Muskogee would know, this is a very serious event, this requires an immediate response. And I think I heard statistics saying ninety minutes, ninety seconds or so and the police can respond in two. I can believe, believe this and I say it from my heart, Officer Ford and Officer Jones would not be standing in a hallway waiting for reinforcements. I truly believe they will take on their training and will gauge an active shooter in the hallway. I may be misspeaking, but I truly believe the way he interacts with these kids and Officer Jones too, they will not be wa- waiting while they're still shooting people in the classrooms. So it's just, it's about trust and that's what these students do. So I think as Officer Teehee, and we struggled even when we were on council, is how to provide more funding for police officers and I think that's gonna be a challenge for this council going forward, quite frankly, is how we can find more money as to recruit more officers and retain those officers. So I wanna say one other thing, y'all are gonna cover capital in CIP, I think, today. So I'm gonna turn around to everybody here, y'all are very here, very passionate about your children. Well, this council has worked for several, several months putting together a CIP program. It's taken a lot of work, a lot of back and forth, it's eleven percent of your budget. If they lose that, I can't tell you where they might be able to cut or whatever. Do you have the passion for your children? You need to have the same passion to pass the CIP extension coming up in July?
Yes, sir.
Do you all need to be there and vote for this or there's gonna be some serious cuts in the city budget when you lose eleven percent? My time's up.
Mr. Gully, thank you. Uh, I'd like to say that, uh, a while back, a short while back, I went to a fundraiser at Hildale and it was amazing how it was like a family affair with every one of the dads and moms and kids there. It was as if everybody was family and everybody was working together and, and doing their little deal and raising, uh, getting ready for auctions and what have you. Uh, I don't know that I've ever seen anything like that at a school before, uh, the way these parents all interacted, uh, like they were next-door neighbors to everybody there. So it, it's, it's a remarkable feeling out there, I've gotten a little tour, but I, just to see the folks like they are here now, it, it was amazing.
It's a very good school system, Muskogee Public Schools, they have an excellent school system too in its own right and we just don't appreciate what Muskogee Public Schools and Dr. Menin Hall has done for our school system.
Thank you.
The amount of time, I know y'all have tired and got a long agenda ahead.
Thank you very much.
Tad Clark?
Good evening, my name is Tad Clark. Uh, I am the band director at Hildale. I also teach two sections of leadership out at Hildale. This is my sixth year there. A little background about myself, I am, and I'm a veteran. I honorably served in the United States Marine Corps for almost eight years. I was a rank of staff sergeant, so I have a little different view than some people do about certain things about this. Um, I had a big talk with my leadership class, you're gonna hear it from somebody else, she's actually in one of my leadership classes. I encouraged her to come to this. What I hear a lot of is you hear a lot about relationships. Um, and I don't mean it to be in an aggressive way and anything like that, I'm just a Marine, sorry. Um, it's not gonna get, come out of me. It's very hard for me, being the band director for six years, I've been at every single football game for the past six years, go Hornets. Okay? Um, I have not seen many people there that I see here. Um, that's not, that's just one of those things. You guys don't know the, the relationship that these guys have with these students. And I know Mr. Teehee came up here and, well, we're gonna, if we only agree to this compromise one and one, you might as well hit factory reset. Because there's nobody you're gonna bring in that's gonna know these kids, that have known these kids since they were in kindergarten, that know their families, know their situations, already have that established relationship with them. Okay? Two goals in the United States Marine Corps, mission accomplishment and troop welfare. Best leader I ever had, two takes care of one. You take care of your kids, they're gonna take care of you. I firmly believe that to my core. These kids trust these officers unbelievably well. They are such a big important role that without seeing them, without being there and seeing how they interact and seeing how the students act with them, you have no idea. There's no way for us to put that into words. You hear these relationships, let's boil it really down to what it really is, scum on the pan, we're talking about your future. The future of this country and the future of this city are these kids. You pull these two out from this, you throw new ones in, what do you really tell them those kids? What are they gonna see it as? Not what we see it as, it's numbers on a piece of paper. We're gonna see it as these kids, well, they don't really care, they don't care about us. It doesn't matter to them, okay? Only those of us who have served as veterans understand, you had Mr. Moore who gave all of these statistics. I'm gonna try to break it down for you a little less, okay, a little, we call it Marine Corps Barney style. You take SROs out, let's say you take one out of the high school, either one of them, you take one out, your response time is probably gonna be about three minutes, okay? We're really short on time here. I want you at some point in time, take thirty seconds, take thirty seconds and just be quiet, just watch your watch. Think about how many shots one person can get off in thirty seconds, then multiply that by six. That's what you're gonna be dealing with, the potential, the future. Are we willing to risk that? Are we willing to risk the potential, the possibility of that with our students, with the future of Muskogee, with the future of this country? Because they're gonna be, they're gonna be taking care of us, taking care of me probably sooner than later, the way, the way that I am, okay? I understand that, guys, and, and I truly respect, these are gonna be very hard decisions. But is it a decision that we're going to have when you want these future kids to grow up to be adults, come back, live in Muskogee, trust the police department, trust that they are actually looking out for the best interest of themselves, for them? If that is there, then they will support the police. You can start changing the dynamic within this city and what it's known for. And, and you, we're getting better guests, but this is a great way to really kickstart that. My, my mother, huh, I love my mom to death, she's one of the best people I've ever known in my life, another educator, she's been here for thirty, thirty-plus years. She always told me this great saying, same with, same with my grandmother, an ounce of prevention is worth more than a pound of the cure. And then the other last thing that I would like to say before I leave, uh, let's try to be proactive and not instead of reactive. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Eric Puckett, please.
Good evening, my name is Eric Puckett, I am superintendent of schools. I live at thirty-seven twelve Sheffield, Muskogee, Oklahoma and have for eighteen years. Most of you have known me most of my life, I'm born and raised in Muskogee, my whole family. Um, I am a graduate of nineteen ninety-three, uh, of Hildale High School, so is my family. So it is personal to me, not just professional. All four of my adult children graduated from Hildale, I have a nine-year-old, soon-to-be-ten little, old-yell little girl, who's in the fourth grade and I have two grandkids and they're great, one is in the fourth grade, one is in the third. I wanna give you a couple of just quick numbers and then I wanna answer a couple of questions that I know I've been asked. I don't think they're fair questions the last couple of weeks. Um, we have over two thousand students, over sixty percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch. I know when Councilman Who's and I went to Hildale, that number was way less than half of that. Our dynamics and our demographics in this town have changed and our school is by far not the poorest school, oh, excuse me, the richest school in the city of Muskogee anymore. I wanna let that be known because people still think that and that is not accurate. Um, over forty-eight percent of our students are Native American. We have a large minority population and I'm proud of that. It hasn't always been that way and I addressed that, but that has changed in thirty years for the better. Sorry if I get emotional. Uh, we've had agreement with the city of Muskogee for over ten years. We pay seventy-five percent of the contract, that was the first question I got asked because it's about money. This has nothing to do with money, never has, the chief has never mentioned that, no one on this council's ever mentioned anything about money. It is a hundred to do, a hundred percent to do with people and staffing and I believe the chief when he says that. Uh, let me say, other than the seventy-five percent of all of their salaries and benefits, for the last decade, we've poured a lot into the training specifically of the gentlemen that have come through us to be specifically SROs, not just city cops. Because as hard as that is, as much respect as I have for that is, it is different dealing with a four-year-old child than an adult out on the street and it is an art, no different than teaching pre-K. And dealing with a sixteen-year-old young man who can be volatile in a school setting is different than dealing with a twenty-one-year-old man on the street. They're still kids and it takes a specific training and a specific skill set that our school has poured a lot of money and resources to. So I go to Mr. Clark's point, a reset sets us back ten years and we lose all of that. Um, I get asked, can Hildale start their own? Sure we can, it's not about money. I'm not braggadocious, but we're just fine financially and we can support it, no doubt. We pay almost a hundred fifty grand right now to the city of Muskogee for these two. I've run the numbers, we can probably do it cheaper ourself. It ain't about money. It's about the two people doing it right now. Why does Hildale have it and Muskogee doesn't? I think you heard the chief say they kinda do right now, right? Their, their program's a great program and I stand before you to say that program needs to last. Both the officers that are in Muskogee Public Schools, they need to stay there too. This ain't about red or green, this is about kids, all of them in this town. So I implore you, whatever you do, don't touch that program either. We need them, he needs them, more importantly, their families need them. I wanna address one other thing because it is about relationships and I'll sit down. What Jared and Nick do every day, you've heard it and I think it's real powerful when you hear it from little kids, not people who some people might think has an agenda or staff. Uh, we have two hundred and twenty-eight staff members at our school, we have a lot of staff. They love these guys, what they pour into my kids and others is invaluable. And I will tell you, I appreciate the chief and his offer of one, I don't know where you guys will go, I don't know where the city manager will go, but I will tell you it is about Nick and Jared and I don't back up from that for one minute. It is about those two gentlemen. Putting two more people in there doesn't work, it doesn't. You know what, that's what the program is, is the relationship they have. So I hope that that's considered. I say that to say, and I'll go back to it, I don't wanna hurt the other programs and the police, I live here too. When I go to Walmart, I want my wife safe. So I get what's standing before you and I get what the police chief's dealing with. I mean that with all sincerity, it's tough. I can't imagine, I deal with staffing too and I don't know if you know this, there's this thing called teacher shortage, it's real. So I get staffing too. Um, the last thing I ask for you to do is when you get to the point that you do recommendations and that stuff, that you recommend that this program continue and be brought to the city count, city manager, God bless that person. I want everybody in this room to know you got a brand-new human being about to walk into this. And I almost feel sorry for them. They're set up to fail one way or the other, not gonna pull any punches, whichever way they go, somebody's gonna be mad. And I hate that because I'm gonna tell you, I'm not mad at Chief Teehee, I don't think he's mad at me, we get it, I get what he's dealing with, I think he gets my passion for this. And if I don't have passion for this, I shouldn't be doing what I'm doing, somebody else ought to be up here. So I thank you, I appreciate what you do, I work for a volunteer board and everybody in this room needs to know every one of you's a volunteer. So if you wanna change, volunteer, get involved. Because what you do, you're doing and you're taking this little bit of tongue-lashing tonight freely and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckett. Diana Mueller?
Hello, my name is Diana Miller and I am a fifth grade teacher at Hildale. Hildale School District needs Officer Ford and Officer Jones on campus each day. Hildale School District has just over two thousand students. When you add in the faculty and staff as well as the families of all of these people, these two officers are directly serving and protecting over ten percent of the population of Muskogee. And the effects of that ripple to most of our community. In addition, these two officers do respond to incidents in the community when needed, um, even when they're on duty at the school, they do respond. Each day, they face situations and handle challenges that many of us can never even imagine. Their very presence decreases fights and threats by, and I teach fifth grade, I don't know if you've interacted with fifth graders lately, but (laugh) there's a lot that they, they get concerned about and there's a lot of potential fights and threats there. Um, by being available quickly, they are able to de-escalate situations before they get out of control, before they become serious threats to others in the school or even in the community. Um, these officers are able to build relationships, especially with those at-risk students. Those relationships allow them to guide those students to make better choices, which keeps our whole community safer. Unfortunately, schools are targets. Having our SROs readily available at our school allows them to respond almost immediately. Having our SROs readily available at our school allows them to respond almost immediately. Having to rely on, to rely on officers who are on patrol increases response time. There's a lot of bad in this world. And it, as a direct result of the work that Officer Ford and Officer Jones do, our children and our families are safe and protected, and that is priceless. I want to continue to read a few of the messages from our fifth graders. I would like to thank you for protecting me. I'm sorry, these are my babies. For protecting me pre-K through fifth grade. One thing I liked about you is you would high-five us and fist bump. You make me feel safe, and you always help if we need it. You always make a difference by being friendly to all of us. You help me problem-solve when I have a problem, you are the best. Thank you, Officer Ford, for being there when we need you the most. And thank you, Officer Jones, for also being there, you guys are the best. I might be going into sixth grade next year, but that doesn't mean that I want you guys to leave. I have little sisters. One's in the fourth and one is in kindergarten, and I want you guys to be there for them. When there is danger, you guys are there for us, and thank you. Thank you, Officer Ford, for making me feel welcome at this school. When I came here in first grade and felt I didn't belong here, I saw you in the hall, and you made me feel better about this school. And if anything ever happened there, everyone would be safe and calm about what is happening, because they know that you're here for them. You make sure that we know our fire drills and intruder drills, so that's why we are prepared for anything. Thank you, Officer Ford, we love having you. You, I'm sorry, you keep us safe no matter what, you have always been there. We would probably be in danger if you weren't here. You're the best officer we could ever ask for, we feel safe when you're in the building. The reason I feel safe in this environment is because of you. When a kid is sad, he helps make it better. For our protection, he should stay. He is an amazing role model for everybody, a lot of kids look up to him. We ask that you recommend to keep these two officers as the frontline of support for some of the most vulnerable members of our community, our children. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, thank you. Danielle Ward, please.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Ward. I reside in District Three, and I'm here to speak on the importance of our school resource officers at Hilldale Public Schools. I'm a current teacher at Hilldale High School, and I've had children who also attended Hilldale Public Schools. I was at the elementary when our SROs first began in two thousand fourteen. Officer Ford was the first SRO I worked with. Our school became a safe place to be. Prior to working for Hilldale, my career was with Union Public Schools, Roy Clark Elementary that sits between Thirty-first, Forty-first, Mingo, Garnet. We would be on lockdowns weekly due to citizens from the community running from cops and entering our building seeking safety. Tulsa County Sheriff's Office provided us with an SRO. These lockdowns decreased dramatically, and we were able to teach and students be students. I saw the impact SROs had on a school. My first year with Hilldale, no SROs. Unfortunately, school shootings were happening, and the security of feeling safe was not there. Doors were not secured, and I had the constant worry of what-if. Meeting Officer Ford and having him at the elementary helped calm my fears of what-if, simply knowing he was in the building. What a level of comfort that was. Over the years, I have moved schools, and now the high school, Officer Spears, and now Officer Jones, roam our halls, parking lots, attend home athletic events, build relationships with our students, and have handled situations that could have escalated without their presence. For me personally, our SROs have helped me in several situations. One, a vehicle leaving student pickup floored their vehicle, almost hitting me. Officer Ford was there to issue a ticket and make sure I was okay. Officer Spears spent time in my classroom, for we did not have a closet to hide into, telling us what to do to take cover if a what-if situation would occur. At a young child wandered into my garage at home, patiently waiting to hear parents yelling their child's name, I was able to reach out to Officer Ford and gave a description of the child. He then informed me to keep the child safe, and he sent help. I had an incident in the high school parking lot with a parent and student. Without Officer Jones, this situation would have escalated and become unsafe for other students and myself. We were going through construction, the alarm sounds, intruder on campus. You can't imagine how scary that is. When I look out my door and I see Officer Jones running to the office, I knew it was something bad. If I feel that way, how do you think my students felt? I had a student come into my classroom after school one day. He listed students that he could not stand. He looked me square in the eyes, though, and told me that my students were gonna be my kids, my personal kids, were gonna be okay, because I was his sister's favorite teacher. These kids were my students' friends. I watch our SROs assist with medical emergencies on campus, working after hours on school threats, and I could go on. After all, ten years of working with SROs, there's lots of stories to share. I know we are short-staffed on our police department. Removing these SROs is a temporary fix to a problem that's ongoing. The question I have is here, is this, what if a scenario happens, and we are short-staffed on the department? What methods are in place so we don't lose children? What lives are we willing to protect less to add an officer to a shift? Are you prepared to take all the calls and bear the responsibility that lives were lost due to the wait time of getting an officer to the scene? I hate that we live in a world where people have lost respect for another human life. Our kids deserve to feel safe. Removing our SROs is not a long-term fix for our police department. SROs have an impact on students and make so many positive connections that feeds into our community. They are role models, community outreach, career pathways for these students, and they are teachers. I will end this with parents of Hilldale, I feel they can reach out to our SROs whenever their child sees online talk that puts others in danger. When, if our SROs leave, will we be given the same sense of urgency to check into the matter or be told we'll send someone shortly?
Thank you.
Each of you knows seconds count. Thank you.
Kristy Rowe.
Hello, my name is Kristy Rowe, and I'm the music teacher at Hilldale Elementary. They've said so many wonderful things about why we need Officer Ford and Jones, um, from they monitor assemblies we have to keep us safe when people come in and out, they check our doors. Officer Ford checks my door every day. I have one, I'm one of the only rooms in the building that has an outdoor door coming into my room, it's used for bus duties at the end of the day, and he checks that door every day. He walks on the outside and makes sure somehow it didn't catch. He gives every teacher his personal phone number, so if there's an emergency, we can get ahold of him very, very quickly. But a story I wanna tell you is back during the big shutdown. I had a very, very shy student who, the entire time we were still educating, um, he would not answer the phone, no one in his house would answer. It was very, I became very distressed about him. And I reached out to Officer Ford, and this is a very shy student, I think that year he may have said two words in my class, at the time I was a fourth-grade teacher. Officer, um, Ford went over there, and the little boy himself opened the door and threw his, threw his arms around Officer Ford. So that just tells you how familiar and comfortable they are with someone who really can protect them. And then the last thing I wanna say is very personal. In twenty-sixteen, I almost, uh, lost my son to a grandma seizure. He was nine years old. Um, I wouldn't wish those emotions on my worst enemy if I had one. It's the most, one of the most horrible things you can go through when I thought he was gone. Uh, he had a grandma seizure last fall during basketball practice, and Officer Ford and my boss, Officer Ford is the one that got me through, uh, the car release over at the high school very quickly. I couldn't have gotten through all that traffic, 'cause I didn't know if my son was still okay or not, we weren't able to get ahold of anyone. He got me through very quickly, and Officer Jones is the one that was with him. So thank you for listening, thank you for believing with us that we need these two officers.
Brooklyn Cope.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Cope. I'm a fourth grader at Hilldale Elementary. I disagree about taking Officer Ford from our school. Officer, Officer Ford serves a purpose for a reason. He provides safety, protection, and happiness. When there's an emergency, we have to get to safety. He risks his life by checking the building so we are safe and okay. Even when he just walks by, he makes people feel happy and safe. When people need to talk to someone, he's willing to listen with all his heart. Officer Ford shows that being kind costs nothing, not even a single penny. He puts himself before others and makes sure they're okay before he even makes sure himself, his own self is okay. I admire him for all that he does. I love having Officer Ford as an inspiration to me and other people, as a person who makes people happy and most special as an officer. Do you want your kids or grandkids going to a school with no officer or form of protection? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Diana Croman.
Brooklyn, you make me proud, she's a former student of mine, so, very good. And hello, my name's Deana Croman. I've been a member of this community all my forty-nine years. I've came full circle at Hilldale. I was a student at, at Hilldale from kindergarten through twelfth grade and graduated in nineteen ninety-four. I went to college for an early childhood degree and did my full internship at Hilldale. I now have been a teacher at Hilldale for twenty-three years, full circle is what I call it. Teaching is my passion, and Hilldale is my passion. Teaching, students, family dynamics, addiction, society in the world has changed dramatically through the years, we all know this. When I first began teaching, we would have community helpers visit our classes and the students. Sadly, several students would be scared of the police officers or even get mad at them. These students had been in situations of addiction, abuse, and/or neglect, and had misunderstandings at their young age, and sadly, the experience of what a police officer's job they thought actually was, they had a misunderstanding. Our number-one priority is keeping students safe. SROs are much more than that. Having them here at Hilldale has shown our students many different sides to a police officer's job. Officer Ford and Officer Jones have been wonderful, positive role models to not only our students, families, and staff, but to this community. They have built relationships of security, trust, and compassion that will last a lifetime. Officer Ford and Officer Jones are at events during and after-school hours, sometimes very late at night after coming in early that morning. They listen to families and students dealing with issues in and out of school for advice and help. Families in this community trust Officer Ford and Officer Jones. Students know they can trust and depend on these officers to be there for them. Students are not afraid or mad at police officers like when I first began teaching. Officer Ford and Officer Jones have changed that perspective. In today's changing, changing world, and sadly, the high amount of guns and violence in schools, it gives an undescribing sense of peace to know that we have Officer Ford and Officer Jones present at our school. They are expertly trained on school shootings and know the ins and outs of our school from their time and experience at Hilldale. Life changes in mere seconds, but having them on site with their knowledge of Hilldale and training would make a huge difference if we ever have to deal with a type of tragedy like a shooting. I pray that we never do. Officer Ford and Officer Jones do so many things that most of us never see to help our school be a better and safer place. We appreciate them more than words can truly express. I pray you strongly consider before removing them from our school. No disrespect to the police department, truly, Mr. Teehee and everyone else. But I don't know if adding two police officers patrolling the streets will make a difference, but I do know removing Officer Ford and Officer Jones from Hilldale will make a huge difference. Thank you.
Becky Irwin.
I too am a fifth-grade teacher. I'm Becky Irwin from Hilldale Elementary School. Uh, I have some voices for you to read, uh, listen to. Mateo, thank you for everything you do. Every morning at Circle Drive, I see him. That reminds me that I'm safe at school. He is important to me, because every morning, he checks that every single door in our building is closed and locked. Whenever you see him in the hallways, he'll either greet you, or crack a joke, or give you a fist bump. A couple of years ago, we had an assembly that was about drills, and during that assembly, he told us that he would keep us safe. And this day, he has kept his promise and reassured us that almost every year, I will keep you safe. I couldn't imagine him being gone and not being safe as he were not here, so please keep him at our school. Paisley, Officer Ford isn't just a police officer, he is a role model, our comfort. This school would not be as safe where it is now if it weren't for Officer Ford. He is good with kids, and he does a lot for our school, and he is for the people in it. And he would do anything to stay here with us, and the kids would do anything to keep him here. We love Officer Ford, and we would do anything for him. He loves us almost as much as we love him. He is the best officer at this school and I've ever, than we've ever had, and we will ever have. A lot of my students mention that they have brothers and sisters coming up, and they were concerned about their safety, or their having that relationship with a resource officer. I think something that breaks my heart, I've only been at Hilldale for two years, and I love it. I came from another district where I suffered burnout, and as a professional burnout, my heart breaks for our police force, that so many of them are suffering from that. That's something that needs to be taken care of. Our police force should never feel that way. We should lift them up and make them feel as important as all of us are. I'm glad to hear we're getting some recruits in, but I'm just concerned about this bandage situation. What can we do about recruiting, recruiting and retaining our officers for our own public safety? Thank you very much.
Damian Battenfield.
Hi, I'm Damian Battenfield, a fifth-grade Hilldale student. I'm on me. We should not take SROs out of school. We need SROs, because in case of an emergency, it won't take more than a minute response. As if we don't, it could take five to ten minutes, which would not be good. In case of an active threat, Officer Ford would be able to respond ASAP. If he was on patrol, it would take cops longer to get there, and they wait for backup. Officer Ford will not go there as fast, will not go there as slow, or as fast as he can, and he would make sure all of the students and staff are safe. I may be going to middle school next year, but what to keep, but I want to keep Hilldale future students safe, and I want to be safe in middle school. So I say you should keep SROs. I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for all of Hilldale.
Thank you. If he reads books as fast as he talks, he's going to... Delanda Martinez.
Hello, I'm Delanda Martinez, and I'm a nurse out at Hilldale, and I've been there about five years. So I'm gonna go a little bit to the medical side of why I... So I'm going to go a little bit to the medical side of why I would like to keep the SROs at our schools. Their ties to the city and their walkie-talkies and things, get EMS out to the school a lot faster than dialing 911. A few weeks ago, we had a situation. They were there within minutes. Our student was great afterward. They are mine and a lot of people's security as far as like CPR and things like that go. I know that they're going to be comfortable doing that. They've probably done it before. Our staff is CPR certified, but how many of them have actually done it? Probably very few, if any. It's not something that you enjoy doing. It is very rigorous. It's hard to do. It's hard to keep up with. You hope you have somebody to switch out and do what you need the help with at that Our officers are great. The kids love them. You've heard that a million times tonight. But those minutes and them being able to get EMS there and help could actually save a child's life at some point. So that's just a little food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Galor?
My name is Jessica Galor and I've been an educator at Hildale Elementary for 16 years. I am also the mother of two elementary-age children who attend Hildale Public Schools. As I'm sure you're aware, school safety is one of the most important issues our communities are tasked with in this current age. For the last 10 years, whenever friends have asked me what Hildale does to make sure our students are safe, I have confidently said that Hildale is unparalleled in keeping students safe. Tonight, that confidence is in jeopardy. The partnership with Muskogee Police Department is vital to offering the best possible protection for our students. What I pray you understand tonight by the end of the meeting is that security extends beyond having the presence of a guard on campus. SROs are essential because they have law enforcement authority that other forms of security do not. They have more authority to conduct investigations and enforce laws on school grounds. In the first year of our SRO program, two teachers were struck by vehicles from angry parents in pickup and drop-off lines, as crazy as that sounds. Officer Ford was able to write tickets and stop that behavior from happening again. This authority also keeps problems with student behavior on campus from escalating out of control. Students know when they can push boundaries. They know when authority has limits and what they can get away with. Having police officers on campus also saves seconds that could be vital in worst-case scenarios by having direct access to police resources. Police officers have more effective training in responding to emergency situations, including active shooters, and locking down perimeters in a clear-headed and efficient manner. This access to police resources also means more effective resources for helping students. SROs have more training in specifically dealing with children and youth. They are also more capable of providing safety training to students and staff. I have personally been the recipient of those training sessions and I'm not only more knowledgeable about safety at school, but also how to keep myself and my family safe in our community. It's also crucial for you to understand that security is not just physical. It's mental and emotional. Our elementary students are distraught at the thought of not having Officer Ford on campus. As you've heard, another one will not do. The relationships that currently exist in our schools between teachers, students, and SROs is the most important aspect of this partnership with Muskogee Police and they cannot be replaced. Officer Ford has spent 10 years building relationships with our families, teachers, and students. All of our students know him as trustworthy and safe. Some of them know him as the person who checks on them at school after their family has had a crisis that law enforcement has needed to be involved in. Other forms of security would not have that community connection to be as involved. All of our teachers know we don't have to worry about him not showing up in an emergency and the same with Officer Jones. All of our families know that Hildale is a safer campus because our SROs have an authoritative and relational presence on campus. Taking away SROs takes all of that away. I've seen comments floating around that Hildale should take responsibility to their own security. To that inflammatory statement, I say, we have. We took responsibility by assessing program designs and choosing the very best for our students because they deserve the very best. We took responsibility with the inception of the SRO Program Partnership with City Police, as have other school districts and city police departments, including Fort Gibson, Talalqual, Wagner, Sand Springs, and Sepulpa, just to name a few. Since the inception, we have continued to be committed to the responsibility as we have increased the portion of their salary we pay. City Council, we ask that you join us in providing the best for our students. Will you take responsibility for protecting our city's most valuable and vulnerable asset, our children? Thank you.
Adeline Butler?
Hello, my name is Adeline Butler. I am a junior at Hildale High School. I'm also the junior class president. I just want to thank you guys, Mayor Kale and city councilors for the opportunity to speak today. Also, thank you to Chief Teehee for all that you do for our community. I'm so thankful I was raised in the city of Muskogee. I'm also very thankful to be a student at Hildale High School and I've attended Hildale Public Schools my whole life. Most importantly, I'm thankful for Officer Ford and Officer Jones and their dedication to ensuring our students' safety every day. Chief Teehee, my parents speak very highly of you, so I know that you must be a good man. I can imagine officer shortages could be troubling to overcome, but if I had one ask, it would be this, that you keep Officer Ford and Officer Jones right where they are. The relationships they have built with students is unmatched to any other officers I've made relationships with. Growing up, having Officer Ford and Officer Jones in Hildale Schools has afforded me the feeling of safety. I never, I have never felt unsafe knowing that if a need arose, they were right there willing to protect us at all cost. Having Officer Ford in elementary with me and getting to know him, and him getting to know me by name, and still to this day, seeing him in the hallways at schooling events and talking to him, and him knowing my name, and now knowing Officer Jones and being able to talk to him just like I can talk to Officer Ford, it's a relationship that I have not formed with any other member of service in our community. Again, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Okay, good job, everyone.
Might be recognized before we make a decision. I have sat here and listened to everybody and as an educator from Muskogee Public Schools. Our, when Chief Teehee said that if we don't come to a compromise, he's going to have to pull those community resource officers and the drug officers. I work at Cherokee Elementary School and just last year, I sat on a floor for the majority of the day in a lockdown with my students. And Dan was handling the front of the school and all I could do, because I don't have windows, was to call Officer Mays, who was our community resource officer, to come and help me with my fifth graders. Tammy, you've worked there and you know how much we need the community resource officers. And as I was sitting here while everybody was talking, I was thinking about a story, a Bible story, because I'm part of Chief Teehee's people that he decided to call that one day. There's a story in the book of First Kings where Solomon has to split a baby, right, for two mothers, if anybody knows this story. First Kings, Chapter 3, 16 through 28. I looked it up as I sat here. It's, the compromise would be a win-win because I have young people that without Officer Mays and Officer Mills, they're going to be just as traumatized. I walked your halls with Officer Ford and I saw how he interacted with those kids. And that's the same thing I see every day, that Officer Mays and Officer Mills have an opportunity to come into my campus with young people that they see every day, that they get out of traumatic experiences. And I'm going to ask that we come to a compromise, right? I've talked to Eric Kana about that. We need a compromise because if they take those community resource officers as well as the drug officers, they're going to be also young people that are going to be just as traumatized as the young people that have spoken today, the fourth graders that I teach right now. I'm going to have to go back to them and I didn't ask them to write letters. I didn't ask anybody to come and speak. I wasn't even intending to speak. But as you spoke and I saw, because I can visualize exactly what you're talking about and I've been on the floor and I've waited multiple times. With the last high-speed chase on a Saturday, I was there getting my room ready and I had to call for somebody because as I was unloading my car, the gunshots, I could hear them and I didn't know exactly where they were as this driver went and murdered somebody right down the street from our campus. And so we also need everything that you need. And I heard Superintendent Puckett say that neither of these programs need to be canceled. So I'm going to ask that we consider a compromise. I'm going to, I'm going to step out here and say, Officer Ford's name has been mentioned so many times because he's on that elementary campus. And I know what it means for elementary kids to have that feeling of abandonment because I work with young people who don't have parents, who are in foster care, and who from day to day don't know who's going to pick them up. So I understand abandonment, that if we could compromise with Officer Ford and work toward doing something with the high school, when we can do something else, if that could be the compromise, maybe if we have to choose the one-on-one or something that we could do. But I think that the community resource officers are also needed because I heard mention Muskogee Public Schools. I'm an educator from Muskogee Public Schools. The number of campuses that our police officers, we only have three, are having to police, I don't have a police officer on my campus every day. And so I understand the fear and I understand everything that you are saying and I'm asking you for a compromise. And if we work through this, if we could utilize the compromise and see where we can get with our police officers.
Ms. Cranford, thank you. Here's our dilemma. We can do what we normally would have done maybe, and that's vote to approve this to be negotiated. And we've got another choice that was offered up tonight, and that is to be guaranteed, Officer Ford, and then go into negotiations. If it were me, as a parent, I would rather take, let's have a guarantee of one individual and then we can talk about what we might do as far as the rest of the contract is or going down the road. I'd rather have that than let's vote to have them do a contract.
I was not, I was not speaking in regard to making that decision. I'm just offering that if it has to happen, that that be an option. I was not saying that that was something to put on the table tonight.
No, I was just, I was putting that on the table, if you will.
I don't think we can.
I would like to say something. I've been sitting here wanting to listen to everybody and everybody that spoke from Hildale, y'all did a great job tonight talking to us and explaining your heart to us. I kind of know a little bit about something about dealing with school police officers. I have a little bit of experience. The entire 30 years that I've been at Muskogee Public Schools is their chief of police for the school district. You can't just put anybody in that school. You can't just say, hey, the next officer up, you're going out there. You can't do that. I'm going to go out on a number, probably about in my 30 years, I probably had about 45 guys that worked for me that couldn't, that should not have been in that situation. Now, when I interviewed them, they sounded like they were going to be on board with it and they could handle it, but the relationships and the way they deal with kids, the mentality of the officer has a big, huge part in how those kids respond to them. Not every officer in Muskogee, I mean in Muskogee City can do that job. I know both Officer Ford and Officer Jones and I understand where Hildale's coming from, the people from the school district, when they say about relationships. In my 30 years, I've had guys that committed really bad crimes and some of them are still in prison that when they knew Muskogee Police Department was looking for them, they showed up at school at 6:45 in the morning, I'm sitting here picturing it in my head, to come and talk to me because they felt safer with me putting the handcuffs on them and arresting them for the crime that they committed in the city of Muskogee than they did for Muskogee officers to come and get them. You can't, you can't teach the mentality that these officers have to have to deal with these students. When you have a kid that they lost their parent and they don't want to talk to anybody but the officer because of a relationship. So when you talk about, and I'm not getting to say anything about your statement, but when you talk about compromise, because when she's talking about like Mays and him, Ron Mays has that same mentality. He can come and talk to our kids and they tell him things that are bothering them, just like with Ford and Jones at Hildale. Think about how many officers, there are 68 patrolmen. Yeah. I promise you that there's probably not 10 of them that could probably go out there and hook up like the two that are out there. You can say it's not a street deal. It's because there's a mentality that a street police officer, and these guys are street police officers, but you've got to have a special heart to put the right officer out there. And as a citizen of Wartu and as a campus police officer from Muskogee Public Schools and who had a daughter that went to Hildale, I don't want a compromise. I want our city to, I want to follow what we put on here. I want our city to negotiate the two officers for Hildale. And if at all possible, I would like to keep the two that are out there.
Both the, both the SRO and the CRO programs are vital to our community and I, as me putting forth this agenda item, I would like to go ahead and make the motion that we authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Hildale Public Schools.
Before we do that, can we, can we adjust that contract at all? Like can we say up to two? Because what the chief said earlier, and I like, I agree 100% these guys need to be there. I worked with both these guys at the police department for 18 years. If I was going to go to the department and pick two guys, it would be them, 100%. They need to be there. But the chief just mentioned if we vote to keep them two there, he's going to restructure the police department and it's a great possibility that these two guys may not get reassigned back out there and we can't mandate that the chief do that.
We can't mandate anything within the contract.
I understand that, but...
We're just, we're just...
I'm going off his words that he said, if we do that, he's going to restructure and likely it's going to be two other people out there. And I agree with everybody in here, these two guys need to be there for sure. But if we have to figure out some way to go back to this and get the city manager, whoever it is that's in charge of doing this negotiation... to this and get the city manager, whoever it is that's in charge of doing this negotiation, this, this should have never came to us, in my opinion, like this. This should have been worked out through the city manager, through the city attorney's office, through whoever has to work this out with the school, and, and we should have been voting on keeping one of these two guys out there, not possibly keeping them both and then the chief moving them out. Because if he moves them out, then we've defeated our purpose for voting yes to keep them out there. If he just moves them right out, then we've, we've done nothing here but, but put two other guys out there, which everybody is against. And so if we do that and he moves them, then, then we've done nothing for Hilldale.
We're just asking that the city manager would negotiate a contract.
But we could ask.
I understand that.
It'd be the same.
We could ask that the city manager negotiate a contract with the guarantee upfront of Officers Ford remaining. So we can do that, or we can say just negotiate a contract.
So again, to my point and to CB's point, if the negotiation even, and I understand that nobody's wanting to compromise, but we heard Chief T. He say that if we don't compromise, then everybody's going to lose. Because the, the community resource officers that my kids deal with every day will be taken from them, and then he's going to put a pool together, like he said, for the two that would be out there because it would only be fair to do that. So in essence, he's right, we're taking a gamble if we, if we don't do the compromise, we're taking a gamble. Because he, well, I mean, it needs to be clearly stated, like CB is saying, we're taking a gamble. Chief T., he said, without the compromise, he was going to take the two community resource officers, which means we, I, our, our kids lose. He's also gonna take the drug officers, which means everybody that's doing and trafficking drugs, they're free to move. That's four officers that he said he was going to take. He's going to take the two that are at Hilldale now, and he's gonna put all these people in a pool for those two positions when we know if we compromise, for sure you're going to get to keep one, that you definitely get to keep, and then the others stay in place. That's what he said when he spoke. We can bring him back.
And I believe what he said, when the chief said that he, when we, they get fully staffed or more staffed, that I, Officer Jones should also be there. The chief absolutely knows that. And I believe that he, when he got staff, would have a pool, but I believe Officer Jones has the experience to, to get put out there, more than anybody else at the police department. Like I said earlier, I've, I've worked with these guys, I know them both. They both should be there. But if we vote the way this is set up, we are taking a big chance that neither one will be there.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
May I have a second?
We like to vote to do it as.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, sir.
So, no, there, he said he's moving some of them too.
And the drug officers are not part of the school.
Can we get clarification on even what kind of authority we have with any type of motion that's put on, on the table tonight? I don't want anybody to be misled on the action that we even have power to take at this time from the city council.
Yes, sir. The council, the city council as a body does not have any power to force negotiations or contracts between the city manager and the schools. It's totally up to the city manager. Council as a body can make a, basically make a recommendation or authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract, but they cannot make a, they cannot dictate basically or outline what those terms will be in the contract.
But we can recommend that we want them to have two and we want it to be the same.
Well, you can, you can put your voice out for the city manager to listen to, and the city manager will make the, whatever judgment call the city manager needs to make.
So, so at the same, we can't change it, but we can, this is a question. We can say, okay, uh, let's make this motion with Chief, what Chief T. He said in mind?
Yes, and, and what that is basically is you're showing your support of an item, one way or the other, to the city manager.
So it's either, it's just, it's all open or they've got one guarantee, if you will, if you will.
Yeah, you can't guarantee, so the body can't guarantee. But you can again state what your desire is and let the city manager consider that.
Can I clarify something really quickly? Because I heard from the audience, you keep your four and we get screwed. Those commu, the drug, the drug officers are not part of the school. I was just saying the community resource officers, that's two people, Officer Mays and Officer Mills that come to our campus. I was just restating what Chief T. He said about taking the four. I'm not saying that we get to keep four. I'm just saying that that's what he said about the four. I was just trying to clarify, like he's saying what was put out on the table before we say anything. So it wasn't that I was trying to keep four officers.
As, as a council, as a council, we only have the authority to say you can move forward with the contract or not. We don't have the authority to say you're going to guarantee one, you're gonna guarantee this, guarantee that. I have complete faith in Mr. Puckett and Chief T. He, I really do. I think that there is a solution to keep both officers there. I really think there is. I think there's a way that this city can figure out. We're all smart people here. Okay? And we've lost a lot of officers, not because the city's not taking care of our officers. We lost a lot of officers from recruitment to OHP. We've lost, I think, up to like twenty-some odd officers over the last two years. So it's nothing that the city has done. But I think that as far as we moving forward, that we need to say we're gonna move forward with this contract. And I think that we need to make sure that Mr. Francis understands the direction of the community and us, that we expect these two officers to be at Hilldale.
Correct.
If there is not, if it's just something that's impossible, impossible, I know that Chief T. He and Mr. Puckett can come up with a solution that's gonna work out best for Hilldale and for the city of Muskogee.
Don't we have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
We do, but I get to say my piece.
Okay, with a motion and a second, roll call.
Do you wanna restate the motion?
I made the motion that.
Exactly, the agenda item.
That, the way it's presented in the agenda item, that we.
Your motion was that the manager works out a contract.
Yeah, so the city manager will negotiate a contract with Hilldale Public Schools.
Two seconds.
Yes, and the body of the agenda item, surely it does, it does say the two officers.
It says two officers, not the two officers. Am I correct? We, I mean, I don't wanna mislead anybody tonight.
It says two officers.
Two officers.
Yes, that was the way the agenda was written in 2023. So we pulled it from that last agenda item we had for it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Definitely, yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CBAble.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Uh, I want everybody to know that all of these counselors up here are, uh, in favor of things continuing the way they have continued over the years. And we all know very well what the benefit is to the school. Um, and I just want you to realize that it's tough all around, but we'll try our best to make things work out and, and hope and pray that they do.
Mr. Mayor, may I put a motion on the floor? Do we take a five-minute recess?
Second.
Yes, sir. Motion and a second, five-minute recess, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CBAble.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, we return to regular session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
CBAble.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, uh, item number one, eleven, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number forty-two fifty-three A, a rezon request for the property located at fifteen oh seven East Oak Muggie, rezoning the property from C one, local commercial, to R one, single family, and if approved, authorizing staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we're now gonna open a public hearing. Ms. Skyl, Skylar Carter?
Yes, so, um, just a little bit of background for this case. Um, the applicant has requested, has requested a rezon of the property located at fifteen oh seven East Oak Muggie, uh, from uh, C one, local commercial, to R one, single family. The proposed use of the property will be for a single-family residence. This property has, has a, uh, single-family home already located on it, and it does conform with the 2013, uh, future land use plan, and the staff recommends approval for the rezon request.
Uh, now we'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CBAble.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number twelve.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number forty-two fifty-four A, a rezon request for the property located at thirty-seven twenty South Cherokee Drive, rezoning the property from R one, single family, to R A, residential agricultural, and if approved, authorizing staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Ms. Carter?
The applicant has requested a rezon of the property located at thirty-seven twenty South Cherokee Drive from R one, single family, to R A, residential agricultural. The proposed use of the property will be single-family residence and small-scale livestock. The request does conform with the future land use plan, and staff recommends approval of the rezon request.
Okay, we'll, we have no one to speak. We'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CBAble.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number thirteen, please.
Consider approval of resolution number thirty twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Muskogee, state of Oklahoma, on the eighth day of July 2025, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the question of approval or rejection of ordinance number forty-two sixty-three A of the city relating to a one-half of one percent excise tax, in addition to all present city, county, and state excise taxes, with the proceeds of said tax to be used to fund capital expenditures, including but not limited to the streets, utilities, public safety, and community facilities of the city, or debt service in connection with said capital expenditures, as more specifically set out in ordinance number forty-two sixty-three A of said city, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Okay, uh, should, okay, so, okay. Let's, let's let Mr. Ron Dean, uh, speak on this issue.
Ron Dean, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for allowing me, uh, opportunity to speak about this. My, my question, uh, is not to, uh, the passage of, or the, uh, or even the project stated in, uh, the resolution that you guys passed last week. It is the fact that there was a citizens committee put together, and months ago by the council, to look over projects, to discuss and bring something back to the council for, uh, for a renewal of a CIP and what that, that would look like. During that process, it was brought up several different times, and I've had conversations with, with both mayor and, and several of the council members as well, and many of, of the folks off of that committee, as well as folks in the public, that have been requesting detailed information of all of the dollars collected in the, the CIP that is expiring in September, and a full accounting of those, the expenditures from those, those funds that were collected, where the money went, what it was used for, and who it, it was paid to, and how they were decided as the vendors of those projects. And that has never been supplied. Uh, it should be something, uh, that should not be difficult, uh, to supply. Every business, every entity, the, the county has that ability, the state has that ability. The, the ability is there to print an Excel spreadsheet with all expenditures and who exactly they, they went to and for what amount and when, and for not just a, a heading of this was under public works or this was under roads, or this was under whatever. What did it, what did it pay for within that? And that's not too much to ask. We're asking the citizens to, to give another thirty-two million dollars over the next eight years of their money, and then trust the city to use it for what, what they say it's gonna be used for. Well, one of the easiest ways to, to give confidence to the public before they go to a, the ballot is to show them how, how the twenty-four million from the past CIP was used. That's the easiest way. And so if, if all of those documents were provided and the council and the public looked through it and said, by golly, all twenty-four million was spent exactly as it said, there's nothing out of line, then that gives the public the confidence to go to the ballot box and say, by golly, let's, let's do this. We can trust them with the next one because they used the first one. And if there is anything that's found in there that's out of line, it gives you as a council, uh, opportunity to do two things. Number one, say publicly, we found a couple of things in here. Thank you for asking for this information, because now we're gonna put some safeguards in place to where going forward, they, it will be spent exactly as, as it needs to be. And we're, we're going to correct this. So it, it's a, a win-win for the citizens and for the council and for the city. And it, it is a first step in regaining trust that I believe has been lost over the years. And we, we need the citizens to trust the council and trust staff that they're using their funds, their hard-earned money, the right way. So I say, let's just be transparent, let's be open, and let's, uh, let's get those documents, let's get those numbers. Mayor, I know it, it's been addressed to you, uh, before, and you, you've shown a, a commitment and a desire to get those numbers. And what I'm, I'm asking is that, that council help, help the mayor, encourage staff to, to do whatever is needed to get those, and let's get it to the public sooner than later, uh, sure before it goes to a, a ballot box, because we don't want a, a CIP that can be great for the, the citizens and great for the community to not pass because of distrust when we've got an opportunity to establish trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, uh, I, thank you. I'd like to say that this group of, of folks that have interest in this have been very, very patient and, and, uh, have very, been very, very polite. And I think it's time that we put it into high gear. Uh, the CIP's coming up sooner than we, than we would otherwise like. And I want to make sure that everybody in Muskogee is on board. And I know there's a good group of folks, including Mr. Dean here, that would be inclined to vote for the CIP. It seems to be a reasonable CIP, um, to a lot of folks, but they're not gonna have any part of it if we can't give them some simple information. So, um, I'd like to start putting that into high gear. Uh, Ms. Bowdenhammer?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to add about thirteen?
Yes, um, this is a, this is for approval of a proclamation, resolution number three of two-nine, which will authorize the city to officially call an election. The election will be on the eighth day of July 2025, and this will submit to all of the registered qualified voters in the city the question or approval, or rejection of ordinance number forty-two sixty-three A, which is our next agenda item. And this spells out specifically how we're going to, what we're going to collect and the main projects it's going to go for. The projects are listed in the background of the ordinance, which is our next topic. So this is our formal. So this is our formal calling of the election. Uh, I will note that I have handed out the beginning of the council meeting an amended version of the resolution and proclamation, and we got our polling place list from the county today, and we added the polling places, the list of the polling places, and then also that precincts forty and forty-five are closed because there are no residents of those two polling locations. So an appropriate motion would be to approve the resolution and the proclamation as amended.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item fourteen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two sixty-three A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, relating to the imposition of a city excise tax of one-half of one percent, in addition to any and all other excess taxes now enforced, to be levied upon the gross proceeds or gross receipts derived from all sales taxable under the Oklahoma Sales Tax Code, excuse me, providing for the use of the proceeds of said excise tax, providing for the effective date of said excise tax to begin on October one, twenty twenty-five, and terminate on September thirty, twenty thirty-three, providing for subsisting state permits, providing for payment of tax, providing that the taxes in addition to taxes currently levied, incorporating certain provisions of prior city ordinances, providing for amendments to this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance are cumulative in addition to any and all taxing provisions of other city ordinances, providing for separability of provisions, and containing other provisions related, related thereto.
Ms. Bodenhammer, please.
Thank you. This is ordinance forty-two sixty-three A, which is in conjunction with our resolution that we just approved. This ordinance actually puts everything into place to call for a vote and to call for the point five penny sales tax, and that is for capital of projects. The current C I P tax is expiring, September the thirtieth. This new tax is voted in by the people, would begin October first, twenty twenty-five, and continue for eight years. The projects are listed in the background, which include li- library rehabilitation, downtown revitalization, hat box upgrades, street maintenance programs, public works facility building rehab, city hall rehab, contracted maintenance, Martin Luther King expansion, the MCC HVAC remodel, and that's for the civic center, derelict structural move, removal, and then we have a contract with the port that we've already signed for two million dollars to put in a berm that will protect the port area, and that will also protect our sewer plant, water treatment plant. So an appropriate motion would be, and again, this one's also amended to show the polling places, so if the, if someone could make a, an emo- I'm sorry, a motion to approve the ordinance forty-two sixty-three A as amended.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, uh, motion passes. Item number fifteen, please.
I just wanna thank you for these being much shorter than Katrina's.
Well, I wanna thank her for all the work.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two fifty-nine A, an ordinance amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, amending chapter fifty-four, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Three, offenses against property, adding section fifty-four dash ninety-one, prohibition against sitting or lying down on a public sidewalk or sleeping outdoor, providing for repealer, separability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Hous?
Uh, thank you, this is my item. So this is an item that basically, as maybe you know, that homelessness issue in our town is, is, it's getting worse, and it's creating a lot of issues. I know that we've made a homeless task force, and we're not trying to be insensitive here or punish people for being homeless, 'cause that's just, I mean, it's just a terrible tragedy in itself. However, we have to balance what we're gonna do about the health and safety of our community, protecting our businesses, and just ma- keeping our community inviting. Our goal's not to incriminalize homelessness, uh, or to act out compassion, but to address the behaviors that are starting to negatively impact our city and our businesses, our local businesses. So this first ordinance, and I have the next few ordinances coming across. This first one is a no sit, no lie, public sidewalk. This is an ordinance that Shani did, City Shani, and actually, it was very, uh, did very well. But this gives us the opportunity to enforce, uh, some behaviors where we do have, and they don't have to be homeless, it's anyone that's just sleeping on the sidewalk that, they, they, you can't do that. You can't do that. If it's in the right of way, you can't go and just park in front of somebody's business and sit there and, and deter traffic away from their business. You have to have permission from that person to do so. So that's what this ordinance is. Can I make a motion that it continues as read?
A second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two sixty-A, an ordinance amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, amending chapter fifty-four, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Three, offenses against property, adding section fifty-four dash ninety, unauthorized camping, providing for repealer, separability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Hous?
Again, this is my ordinance, and again, it's about the same impact that homelessness is having on our community. It's affecting our entire community. But, uh, basically, there's different areas in town, in the town that's, uh, that's basically tent cities are being put up. In this area, over the last year, there's been two deaths in the tent cities that we've had addressed as a city. Uh, it comes in, they end up vandalizing some of the businesses, whether they go into trash can or just leaving other debris that's there the business owners have to clean up. So again, this is another ordinance that's basically starting to discourage some of this behavior and, and gives us the power to enforce people to not, to not do these things. So I, my motion is to move this ordinance as it presents.
I have one question, or, maybe you could answer. Do, what's the fine amounts on these?
For the homeless people, for people who are unhoused at this time, it'd be, it's a low fines. Fifty dollars, we recognize that they might not have the ability to pay.
Yeah.
Um, there's also the possibility of time in jail.
So just up to the judge, normally?
Right.
Okay, just whatever he decides to know what to go with.
Yeah.
And misdemeanor offenses, so.
Okay.
But basically, it's hopefully to provide something that's starting to deter some of this undesirable behaviors that's happening.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Um, I think as part of that homeless task force, one of the issues that we have in the city of Muskogee is that we don't have a designated place for people who are unhoused during the daytime. We've talked about this repeatedly. People who are unhoused are going to be in every city. We have got to do something as a city to figure out best ways to handle people who are unhoused. Um, I see here that it says, um, "And to potentially lead unhoused citizens to seek aid through agencies available to better assist them." We need some designated place for them to go, to have those resources pooled. If they don't have transportation, and they have mental illness, or whatever the case may be, how are we as a city helping to ma- ensure that they do that? Would they have to be arrested first before they are offered these services? We need to do something as a city to make sure that people who are unhoused know where they can go and how to get all those resources together, and maybe one location for them, to make it easier, because a lot of these people are, I, I understand people that are vandalizing, and I understand all those things, but there are some people who are not, and they're on the street for different reasons, and as a city, we're gonna have to tackle those reasons. I agree with all of the ordinances, but we're gonna have to tackle those reasons.
I just wanna add that, I agree with you saying, I just wanted to be clear that this, you know, homelessness is a humanitarian issue, but it's also an economic and a public health issue that comes along with it. And alls we're doing is we're putting enforceable rules in the city, just like a homeless shelter has its own enforceable rules to be able to participate there. It's all we're doing is we're doing some things to give some of the business owners a little bit of, of, of power to be able to protect what they worked hard for.
I agree.
And I will say that our police department is really good about picking out the ones that you mentioned. Some are just unhoused and need help, and they're really good about getting them to the right, right places, so. And I trust they would really do a good job of that, so. But I second your motion.
Okay, uh, we have a first and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, uh, motion passes. Uh, number seventeen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two sixty-one A, an ordinance amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, amending chapter thirty-eight, environment, Article One, in general, adding section thirty-eight dash forty-five, penalties, providing for repealer, separability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Hous?
So again, this one's more or less a housekeeping issue for the following ordinance, that we have to make sure that, um, the fines are set, uh, as they are, is any violation of code. So this isn't a five-hundred-dollar violation for sleeping on the sidewalk. It's not what this is, it's mainly for the next ordinance that's gonna come in place. Is that correct, Katrina?
Well, this ordinance is actually for anyone who tries to maintain or erect or construct, um, any kind of building or structure in violation of the code ordinances.
Oh, okay.
And part of that has to do with, we have a lot of vacant buildings that aren't maintained.
Right.
And they're being used by, by unhoused people in the city.
So.
And catching fire, and we, we've found a couple of dead bodies in buildings.
So basically, what this is, if you own a building in, in downtown Muskogee, or if you own a house and it's just sitting vacant, and you're not taking care and making sure that your structure's secure, that, uh, yeah, we're gonna start code enforcing this. Uh, the city of Tulsa does this, if, if people happen, come in. One, these people break into these houses. Uh, we've had more structure fires here because of this. They, they go in, and I talked to Chief Moore, and if you guys can ask him, and he'll let you know that that is true. So it's just basically, one, we need to do this so that the owners take the responsibility of maintaining their property, and two, this is to protect our employees, our firefighters, and our citizens as well. Can I make a motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number eighteen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two sixty-two A, an ordinance amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, amending chapter thirty-eight, environment, Article One, in general, amending section thirty-eight dash two, certain public nuisance, nuisances defined, providing for repealer, separability, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
So this may get, so, yeah. So this one's more of the housekeeping guilt, and added to the list of codes while we just, the ordinance that we just passed before. I had it backwards in my head last time. So basically, that we have it on the, the, it's a code violation to not keep your structure secure. So again, my motion moves forward as read.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number nineteen, please.
Consider approval of resolution number thirty twenty-five, authorizing certain modifications to the medical plan benefits under the city of Muskogee Employee Benefit Plan, providing and directing said modifications to be incorporated into the plan documents, summary plan descriptions, and benefit summary sheets, as well as approving and authorizing execution of Blue Cross Blue Shield Benefit Program application and required addendums, BCS stop-loss coverage policy, prime therapeutics required documents, the standard, and all other required documents, all to become effective on May one, twenty twenty-five, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for renewal and implementation purposes, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. Ms. Eaton?
Mayor, members of council, this is just a housekeeping item. The original item, or all, all of the items in that resolution were approved on March twenty-four, and then again, at the last public works, uh, meeting. So this is just a housekeeping item, and we recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number twenty.
Consider approval of resolution number thirty twenty-eight, authorizing the continuation of the account fund for the city of Muskogee titled Solid Waste Improvements, and designating the manner in which said account shall be operated for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, or take other necessary action.
So, Mayor and Council, this, uh, resolution enables us to fund the two-twelve account, which is our solid waste collection account. And out of this count, it, uh, we buy our Polycarts, our two-yard containers, and our trash trucks. So that's what this fund does, uh, authorize, and it brings in about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand a year on average. We do recommend approval.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number twenty-one, please.
Receive a report on the twenty twenty-five Asaya cleanup event, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
So Abby Wright and Samantha Henderson from our Stormwater Division are here, and they manage this program, and I might add, they manage it very well. Uh, they put a PowerPoint together to show you the results of this cleanup that we're very proud of, so.
Fantastic.
Miss Henderson's gonna show her PowerPoint.
Samantha Henderson, I am the Stormwater Technician for the City of Muskogee. The Isaiah Cleanup is sponsored again through the Public Works Department Stormwater Division. The Isaiah Cleanup is basically, was basically held March 26 through March 29. Volunteers had a lot of fun cleaning up this year, and I wanted to share some photos and statistics with you from the cleanup this evening. Last year, I had a little over 1,200 volunteers. This year, I am excited to say that we had 3,500 volunteers sign up for the cleanup this year.
Wow.
Volunteers picked up trash throughout the city and collected over 380 bags of trash. This was also a free dump day. All the trash that was taken to the material yard this year, we accepted 1,135 vehicle loads and trailer loads of trash, and it took 300 dump trucks to transport all this trash to the landfill.
Oh, my gosh.
As usual, we received a lot of tires. This year, we've received 818 tires. That was 100 tires more than we received last year. We also received a lot of brush and limbs at the brush and limb site. We had 722 trucks and trailer loads of brush taken to the brush and limb site. This is 200 more loads than what we had last year. We had eight additional illegal dump sites cleaned up during the cleanup. We had several groups that participated in cleaning up the Centennial Trail and this year, this year, and this is the Oklahoma School for the Blind that participates each year for us. I received an email I wanted to share with you from Faye Miller. She's the orientation and mobility specialist for the Oklahoma School for the Blind, and she just wanted to tell us thank you for, the kids had a great time. We also had different groups participate in cleaning up our parks, and we were able to get 16 parks cleaned up here in Muskogee. And this year, I went basically school to school to school, trying to get all the schools to participate, and I am happy to say that I got most of all the Muskogee public schools to participate. I've received this email, again, I wanted to share with you, this is from Tish Dawkins, Principal at Cherokee Elementary. She said, "Every class and teacher participated in some capacity to clean up our school, community, and community park." She wanted to say thank you again for sharing this great opportunity with Cherokee Elementary staff and students. I also received an email from Christina Bowlen. She is the National Honor Society Advisor and Librarian at Hilldale. She said, "Hilldale National Honor Society and Student Council cleaned up for two hours at the middle school and high school, and the elementary and administration buildings," and she wanted to say thank you to us for helping keep our community clean. And just a few more little fun photos. It's always fun to see the photos that the people send in for us that, while they're out picking up trash. These are our sponsors this year, Love Bottling Company, keep Oklahoma beautiful, the Oklahoma Great American Cleanup, and the more beautiful Muskogee, and of course, the City of Muskogee. I wanted to say thank you for all the volunteers and all the city workers that worked during those four days to make this event run smooth. It was a very successful event this year. And a special thank you for all of the Muskogee community that actually cared enough to go out and pick up trash. Thank you.
I don't know if you guys have ever been down on South Cherokee when they're doing this, but Samantha and, what was her name?
I don't know.
Yeah, I was down there the last two years watching them, and they run it like a tight ship. I mean, I don't know what the rules are, but I damn sure know when somebody broke them because she is on them. But they run it really efficiently, everybody's going through, getting everybody in the right lines, and getting everything out of the trucks, and they do a great job down there. If you guys have ever went and watched, it's pretty amazing.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
So, Avery and I want to, Avery and I want to say the same thing. Our ladies do a great job, and we're very proud of them.
Yeah, yeah, they do. I watched them last year, and I was, a lot of people get mad at them, but they're never wrong, I know that much.
CB, I hear you're saying "watched."
No, I was in the garage. I don't know the rules, I can't get involved in that. But I was there, Dan.
Okay, no action needed on that. Item number 23.
Consider approval of the appointment of Robert Watts to the Airport Board to serve a four-year term beginning May 1, 2025, and ending April 30, 2029, filling the expiring term of Tyler Evans, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Cranford.
Yes. So Robert Watts, aeronautical technology, aeronautical engineering, and I think that he would be great for this board. So I recommend approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number 24.
Consider the appointment of Mike Brawley as Ward 1 Counselor, effective April 28, 2025, at 11:59 PM, to serve until the next regular election in accordance with City Charter 206, filling the vacancy in said council seat created by the resignation of CB Abel as Ward 1 Counselor, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Abel.
Thank you. As most of the council knows, I've moved outside of my ward, so I'm no longer able to serve on the council, which creates a vacancy in my seat. Mr. Mike Brawley and I ran together, against each other, I should say, and so he's interested for sure, and he was then, and he still is. I worked with him at the police department, he's a great guy, he was over the Wreckers Division, he did a really good job, very efficient, real nice guy, real honest, great guy to put in my seat, so I hope the board approves him.
Good Shriner, too.
Yeah, great Shriner, too. I would make a motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. I've got a question. Katrina, when can we get him sworn in?
In the morning.
In the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Mr. Hughes had written in to speak, but I don't see him here this evening. Mark Hughes?
Hi.
Okay. Item number 25, please.
Everybody get comfortable. Consider an executive session to discuss, take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section 307b7 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the requested disability retirement from the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement for Employee Number 5060140015, and if necessary, take any necessary action in open session. E, pursuant to Section 307b7 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the requested disability retirement from the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement for Employee Number 6070160115, and if necessary, take action in open session. F, pursuant to Section 307b7 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the requested disability retirement from the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement for Employee Number 7520170145, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. G, pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim, Number 10-23-8, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. H, pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim, Number 10-23-31, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. I, pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, Number 10-13-4487, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, we are, we are now in regular session. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
CB Abel.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here. Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you. My Assistant City Attorney Seth Campbell is in training, and he'll be reading back the please agenda.
Great.
Pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, council did convene an executive